I'd like to call this meeting. Mr. Porter, we have the prayer and the pledge by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal.
We'll bow our heads, we'll say the Lord's Prayer. Name the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father, who art in heaven.
By God, we shall be saved. That we will be saved. Our citizens have been forgiven. Have forgiveness for our trespasses. Have we forgiven those who trespass against us? And lead us not into temptation. But deliver us from evil.
We'll say the pledge, ladies and gentlemen. The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal.
President.
Councilmember Brooke Marcot.
Here.
Councilmember Marlin Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidra Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. Item one, public comment. Have any comment, Court?
No, sir.
We have none. I'll ask you at this time to put your phones on vibrate and we will move on. Madam Clerk, item two.
Acceptance of the minutes of September 7th, 2021, which will publish on September 24th, 2021.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Reed and a second by Councilman Marlin Lewis. Is there any comments on our September 7th agenda? I mean minutes.
Minutes.
Seeing, hearing none? Please vote your machines. Thank you. Item three.
Thomas Faughoo from Iberia Chamber of Commerce to address the council with regards to the gumbo cook-off.
It's on, I know it's been. Yes, Thomas, been on the job about, maybe I'm off now. Good time to start in the middle of gumbo cook-off. But the gumbo cook-off is scheduled October 9th and 10th. We're rocking and rolling. We're, you know, have about 70 teams. I also put in front of you just kind of a little annual report of last year with the Chamber accomplished, some things that just kind of lay out kind of a synopsis of what we do. Because I get questions every day, what is a chamber? And, you know, if you get those questions, it'd be something good to kind of let people know. The third page in that information is just some, a synopsis of last year's event was virtual and that's kind of the, a kind of an overview of the exposure we got for the city in, you know, Iberia and Iberia Parish with the gumbo cook-off. And the last page there, of course, is our schedule of events. October 9th, the Creole Food Fest and the Mean Beans Cook-off and the Youth Division, bands that'll be playing. Saturday, you know, of course, it's all about gumbo and it's the big day and we got about 60 something teams, I think, lined up as of the last week. So it's a good number. It's not as many in the biggest years, but it's still very good. Lots of sponsorship, lots of exposure, lots of opportunity. It's a lot of PRs being done about, you know, Iberia and about Iberia Parish on regional markets. And so it's a good event for us and I want to thank the city for allowing us to use Bullany Plaza and the partnerships we have and helping putting out banner, not banners, barricades and our law enforcement officers that come out and do things and just a really good community event for the city of, you know, Iberia and Iberia Parish and helps the chamber to do what we do daily. I'll take any questions if anybody has anything. I just wanted to really come and thank you guys and kind of put a face on who the new individual is at the chamber.
Any questions?
Mr. Porter, you could have brought a pot of gumbo for us.
Pot of gumbo? You know, that's one thing, I don't know how to cook, believe it or not. They might run me off after I say that, but I might learn a lot about gumbo this gumbo season.
Welcome back, Tom.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been a while since I've been in, you know, Iberia. Started my career actually at 10 years old with the city. I was working at City Park and actually was on the payroll at 10 years old. That was kind of not right, right maybe at that time, but I was. And then worked in boys and girls clubs and nonprofits and whatnot and was working with a kitty and a workforce recently out of the St. Martinville office when I saw the opportunity for the chamber and I said, let me send my resume and just see. And here I am. So I hope to finish my career here. About 53, so I got a few years more to go, but, you know, we'll see how that goes. It's also funny to see people in, you know, Iberia that are like you guys sitting in the place that I used to teach swimming or basketball and I'm getting old, so I guess that's kind of, but, uh, thank you guys.
But I taught you, so that makes sense.
Yeah, you did, you did.
Great. Thank you very much. And we have a little inconvenience in Bullany this year because we have renovations going to make our visitor's center. I am hoping that that, the demo will be done, so the big dumpster will leave. The other area will still be carted off because, you know, out of safety, but anyway, so...
I'm afraid if the big dumpster's there, it'll be full.
It will. I mean, that's where the dumpster's far. At least it ain't up on the ground.
Better there than on the ground.
Better than on the ground. But I am gonna hopefully coordinate with the contractor by that time that at least for that weekend, that dumpster can leave. So, but appreciate everything you do.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
4A, Madam Clerk.
Resolution 21-102, authorizing submittal of ARPA Water Sector Program Grant Application, approving local match and entering into agreements associated with engineering services.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Swier and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Come on. Hearing and seeing none, then I, uh, would ask you to vote your machines? Thank you very much. Move on to 4B.
Resolution 21-103, awarding contract to JC Construction LLC for the installation and integration of an emergency standby generator at Teat Bayou Water Waste Water Treatment Plant.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Swier. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal. Is there any discussion on this item?
Do I have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
As I read through the contract, the one thing I didn't see, and maybe it's just that I don't understand, is what's the maintenance plan after it's installed? I mean, I see how they will come once they're doing the work, but once the work is done, who maintains the system? Because I don't see that. I didn't see it in the contract.
Right.
Vince, Vince need to come in.
Vince, come on up. I know here at our building, we have a contract with somebody who maintains our two generators, but...
Oh, okay. Yeah, sorry, I had to step out. Generator question and maintenance?
Yeah, I'm just, I looked through the contract and I didn't see how it's gonna be maintained after the contract was complete with JC.
Oh, yeah. It's just a construction contract with JC. We'll maintain it. We have probably 10 different generators throughout our system that we do semi...
So we do it ourselves?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
And we price it out every so often, make sure we stay competitive. We'll bid it out.
Wait, you could do mine?
Well, Kevin was supposed to do the whole city at one time, but that fell apart. Anyway, we do our own, so.
Okay, I was just, because I was trying to see, I didn't know if they were doing something after the construction or an installation.
We actually use a generator company.
Okay, all right.
Typically.
Okay, thank you.
Cool. Any other questions?
Event, one more quick. I know that notice going through the packet that I guess the bid parameters were all the same. I noticed a big discretion in some of the bids came in.
Yeah.
Is there a reason for that?
I, I don't know. The high bid, guy didn't call back. The only thing I could think is maybe he misread and thought he had to supply the generator as well. So that only makes sense to me, or they really didn't want the job and just threw a big high number.
I knew it was extensive. I thought, may I hope the parameters were good enough to where we, you know, if we approved is right.
They were. I even worked with the engineers that helped me put that package together and said, look, man, this is a big discrepancy.
Yeah, I noticed that.
The low numbers were very close, right? So based on that and their, their engineering estimate, we were comfortable with that little bid, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Y'all gotta quit scaring the little bidders, man. Everybody's gonna go up on us. I'm picking, old contractor, I can't help myself. All right, 4C.
Resolution 21-104, approving letter to DOTD with regards to Louisiana 87, 823-46LM, 0.426 Waffle House and authorizing the mayor to sign any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion? Councilman Broussard, do I have a second? Councilwoman Marcot, is there any discussion on this item?
So that is, that is for the interest, right?
This is the new Waffle House and there are some sidewalks and they want us to take ownership or and maintenance of the sidewalk after the Waffle House is built. Because they normally don't let people put sidewalks in their rightaways, is what I was told, although they have them all over. So I agree. We get the new Waffle House, if anybody doesn't know, it's going on corner of Lewis and Main, not right at the corner, but part of the old Daly-Iberian property. So they're gonna have the one on the highway and then one, they kind of consider that a downtown location, something that Waffle House is beginning to push. Their grandson flew in about a year ago, the owners of Waffle House, and I kind of knew it was coming. It's taken a little while, but anyway, for this, we have to say we will maintain the sidewalks.
Okay.
Which we would do anyway.
You're right, Mr. Broussard. Anybody else? Then, uh, vote your machines, we get a Waffle House. Thank y'all very much. Madam Clerk, 4D.
Resolution 21-105, approving the 2021-2022 capital outlay project priority list.
Motion by Councilman Broussard and a second by, who seconded on this side? Councilwoman, I think Councilwoman Ledbetter beat. Good. I'm gonna have one item to amend this. I'd like to add something, but I guess I'll take discussion on, you know, what's on the table first. We would just be adding one more park. Is there any...
Want to add it first and then we can talk about it all?
Might be the best thing to do, I guess. Uh, I would like to add sear gates. It's a, about a half million dollar project and it would be to sprinkle sear gates. It's something we've been kicking around. It's needed, we, to increase the occupancy of that building. We also use it as our shelter and because we're not sprinkled, the fire department has to pull a 24-hour watch at that building the entire time that it's a shelter. We have had some times that it has been open for three weeks, four weeks. It is, it is very costly. So the sprinkler system, in the end, will pay for itself and we will be able to put many more people in the building. And as you know, we are changing the roof. We are having some money to go inside. We're having some other capital outlay dollars coming that we are hoping to spend money and renovate the inside. So it makes sense to me, we're probably never gonna have a civic center, but it makes sense to me that if this building was sprinkled, besides the cost we would save from the fire marshal, not having to have our people there, we could actually utilize the building legally for very large events.
Right.
So that's the point of it. So someone would want to make a motion to, and in clear, the other, all the other capital outlay for this year, the big stuff, is all parks. So we would add to our parks and basically we have something at Bank, Ann Street, we have a new park on Ann Street, a new little adventure on Little, in Little Brooklyn, and then we would do sear gates. We'll of course have the Frontage Road and we always put the grade rail separation on even though it's a, would require a $4 million match that we don't have. But that's where we are. So procedure-wise, we would, somebody's gonna have to amend.
Yes, somebody needs to amend the motion in a second.
Yes, yeah.
To add that.
So...
I amend the motion as stated by the mayor.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So I have, uh, Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal and Councilwoman DeeDee Reed. Any discussion on that?
No question. Now, that, that is, that is gonna go on the capital outlay projects for 2022 state legislative session, correct?
Yes. Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Where is the Little Brooklyn Park gonna be?
The Little Brooklyn Park is a piece of property that's being donated to the city. At one time, it was a grocery store. It's a two-story block building about in the middle of the block. None of the buses can turn around and so the kids all walk up to that area anyway. So the owners of the property wished to donate it. The people behind the project have already raised the money, almost of the money, to demolish. It's gonna be $19,000 because it need, there's some asbestos abatement. So the neighborhood raised the money, they're at 15,000 now, so they're close. So we didn't want to take it until we had funding. So, for the whole project.
Right.
So what we're doing is, and we agreed, okay, you tear it down and give us an empty lot with no asbestos and then we'll move forward. So I met with them this week. They are fast raising the rest of the money. There'll be a donation. We're not gonna, we're gonna include this in our capital outlay and if it gets funded, well, then we're gonna have a nice little project.
It's on Henry Street?
Yes.
Okay, I'll ensure. And there's gonna be park equipment or no?
No, it's, what we tried to do is use a metal building, so I'm really conscious of our maintenance that we aren't good at, okay? So it would be all concrete and a metal building, a few little bitty planners, but not a lot. We don't want these new little parks we're doing, we're trying to make them all concrete and use galvanized steel and not have all of the maintenance issues that we have at big parks. We have enough grass to cut. We are, you know, inevitably gonna add other things, so, but we have a couple of little neighborhood parks, but like I said, I'm very conscious or trying to be that we fill them with concrete and do things that are, you know, maintenance-free, as maintenance-free as something can be.
Okay, thank you.
And can I just say that the Ann Street Park is gonna be a new park, it's gonna be a pocket park? It's gonna bring a park to an area of the city that's never had one, so it's gonna be very exciting for the kids down on that end of town, so it is just a major upgrade for that area.
And it's a basketball court. It's some exercise equipment that is exterior that goes by your body weight and a little bit of playground equipment. It is fenced in.
Yep.
And our philosophy, having learned long before I was in politics, I was very involved in Bunk Johnson Park and it was good at first and then it wasn't fenced in and it ended up kind of being a hangout. So this will be something that is fenced, that will be dawn to dusk, that will be locked. So we're gonna end up with a few of these that we are gonna take, you know, to make sure that it is safe and good for everybody. But this will be a small little pocket park that, again, it's all concrete, it's a fence, it doesn't require a lot of maintenance and we will be able to lock it.
And it has something for each age group.
Yeah, and what we did, we tried to figure the exercise equipment would be geared to older people, the playground equipment would be geared to the young, and then a basketball court is always gonna get utilized by all kind of people, but, uh, in all age groups. So that's kind of what we're planning and then, yes, sir, Mr. Broussard.
Cherokee, we used to have a little park that we closed in, locked though. Is it still there?
No.
Cherokee off the Pessau property in the back?
No.
No, it went to the school. It went to the school. It went back to the school.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this? Oh, and we met with Marcus Bryant today. Let me give Marcus his cred. Marcus came over today. We had a good meeting with Marcus and reviewing our projects with Marcus, that's when we decided, you know, we could add another project.
Yes.
If you remember, we have been, it's been a great thing to have, but for the last few years, we've had $3 million broken apart in three years for the museum and Rodrean Park. So because of those projects, we were kind of, you know, not asking for as much because we got a huge amount. We got it over three years, but it was a huge amount of money. Well, we're the first year that we're done with that. In other words, for the next capital outlay, we would not be going after that, so we had a conversation with Marcus. DeeDee and I met with him today and Marcus was like, add another project. So we are taking Marcus's advice. So that's another reason that we added the project.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. We voted on the, did we vote on both, the amendment and...
You only got to vote on one.
Oh, we only had to vote once? Don't do it wrong.
Well, you can't, can't hurt to vote twice.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, so was there a vote to amend?
Yes.
There was a motion and a second, we just voted to amend.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so now we should vote again.
So now you voted to get...
Okay, now we're voting on everything we just talked about, so now we're voting on the amended resolution. If you don't mind, please vote your machines. Thank you. Madam Clerk, 4E.
Resolution 21-106, approving priority list for City of New Iberia Street Project and authorizing Bayrod Habits and Associates to generate bid packages and accordance with state bid laws.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I don't even know who to say. That was, uh, we all want it. Who made the motion? Councilman Swier, I think, and who was second? Councilwoman Marcot, good. Yeah, we, everybody's jumping all over this. What, this is, we have waited so long for this to be able to move forward. John, you got a presentation for us?
Yeah, good evening, John Sharbunchay. I'm senior project manager with Bayrod Habits. I have Mr. Matt Landry with me as well. He's civil engineer over this project. I'd like to thank the city for giving us the opportunity to work with you on this project and look forward to going to the next phase with it. We did prepare a presentation that we can go through. I gave each council member a copy, just so it's easier to follow. Basically, this is a presentation of the City of New Iberia Street Evaluation and Recommendation of Improvement Projects. Although history, the city contracted VHA in March of this year. Our task was to basically evaluate every street in the city of New Iberia, come up with a estimate to repair and a recommendation for street list and projects. We started performing these evaluations in April and we completed the street evaluations, the field street evaluations in July. Just so you understand what that actually means, basically evaluation was performed by a two-person team. We rode each, each street, slow drive, five, 10 miles an hour. And then with that, we collected data, information about the street, what type of street, how wide the street. We calculated what the repair areas are, you know, how much damage the street had, and basically generated a report per, per street. We evaluated every street in the city except for state highways and a portion of Iberia Street because that's being done by someone else already. So basically, we had 482 streets totaling 134 miles and basically that generated 480 individual reports. So you have an encyclopedia coming to you pretty soon with a lot of information. So during the evaluation, we came up with a street index score between 1 and 10, 1 being a failure, 10 being excellent condition. And that basically was to try to help us determine which streets to try to repair, you know, to try to make the priority list. Traffic counting, as we stated early on when we came meet with y'all back in February, we were gonna do some traffic counting. We did collect data on 25 streets throughout the city, just to try to get a feel for how much traffic was on certain streets. And we, I mean, living here my whole life, I kind of have an idea of which streets are the most busiest. But, you know, there are some streets that kind of surprised me, you know, with a lot of traffic and some that I thought would have a lot of traffic that had a little traffic. So, you know, we, it wasn't all a cut and dry situation, but that did also help us determine, you know, what streets we chose. The data entry side, so basically, once we collected all this information from the field, we created a, an enormous database for the city by district. And each street that we reviewed, we generated a repair cost. In other words, what it would cost to repair this street and the condition it's in. It doesn't matter if it had one pothole or half the street was in terrible shape. We calculated the costs to better give you an idea from a city's perspective for budgeting and future planning, what you really need to get your streets up to an excellent level. From all of that, we generated a lot of information. Not all of it's in this small presentation because it would take too long to go through all of that, but I just want to highlight some, what I think is important information that the city, you know, it's useful to you guys. So basically, the first table is the citywide street data by district. So this basically shows how much each, how many streets, how many linear feet a street, but more importantly, how many square yards of street is in each district. Because in repairing streets, it's not really by the foot, it's by the square foot or by the square yard, you know, we're replacing repairing surface. So when you're gonna go out for bid, you're gonna be paying for that square foot or square yard. The probable cost, basically, if you went out today and said, we want to issue a project to fix every street in the City of New Iberia, you're basically looking at just shy of $57 million. That's a big number. Granted, some of these streets have very little damage to them, so, you know, it's, it's a good number to look at, but it really doesn't tell the whole picture. We also basically generated, you know, how much each district has. You know, not all districts are equal. They are population-wise because of voting, but, you know, when you look at street surface, the makeup of the district, you know, you guys have a varying degree of percentage of streets with District 5 having, of course, the largest section of streets. The surface type, just basically let you know that in the city, you have 62, almost 63% concrete, 37% asphalt. You know, that's a pretty, pretty good makeup. It just also means that your repair costs are gonna be higher because concrete costs a lot more to repair than does asphalt. It's just the nature of, of the materials. You have a few little aggregate surfaces and you have one Brick Craver Street downtown, you know, that's a railroad avenue. So, your condition index, so basically, this is the, the condition we were talking about 1 through 10, 1 being a failure and 10 being excellent condition, pretty much brand new. We actually do have some of those in town. You know, it was surprising, but if you actually look at, you know, index 6, 7, and 8, 75% of the streets in the city, some may not agree with that number, but, you know, they fall within that 6, 7, 8 category, which basically means you're average or above. 15% fall below average, so, you know, that's a pretty high number considering the amount of money you're talking about. But the city did do quite a few projects in 2008, 2009, 10, and 15. I mean, we did do a lot of repair work in those projects. So that helped bring this, this score for this project. So basically, all this information, based on the data and discussion we had with the council members, we each met with you individually, we recommend the city consider approving three projects, three project lists. Your first project would be an overlay, asphalt overlay. This basically is a patching overlay. There are some reconstructions in that, in that list, but this is every street that would receive an actual asphalt overlay. It's 49 streets in all. It has a total project budget of $7,337,404.96. It's by far the largest project, just because you get more bang for your buck. I mean, you get to repair a lot more surface for the dollar on an asphalt project.
John?
Yes, sir.
On this first project, that is a milling of a certain amount off and re-surf, repla on a new surface.
Some of it, some of it is milling off, in not all cases. You don't have to mill off the whole surface, you know?
I understand, but...
Yeah, it is a, if it says overlay, it's gonna receive a, a brand new overlay surface.
So, John, how long should we expect an overlay street improvement project to, how long should that street last before it needs maintenance?
I mean, generally, when we, when we look at, you know, streets, we, we give them a, on asphalt, it's typical, it's a 20-year lifespan.
Okay.
You know, theoretically with asphalt, you're supposed to go in and maintenance it, you know, 10 years in, there are processes you can go to do maintenance.
Okay.
And that's kind of on the, the bottom list of the third project is an actual maintenance to try to maintain some streets.
Okay.
There are different products you can use at different varying stages of the life of a street, depending on condition. Some of them are really simple, some of them get into a little more cumbersome, that's not quite as an overlay. It's just, it's just basically increase that lifespan as much as you can.
But on average, it's a twenty-year lifespan?
Generally, when we say a road lasts, you, you're looking at twenty years.
Excellent.
Now, sometimes, you know, we have streets in the city that are more than twenty years old, they've, that has a lot to do with traffic, you know? The drainage is an issue. If you have any failures in the roadway, that accelerates the deterioration. I mean, there's a lot of factors into it, but when we look at it from a design perspective, we're looking at a twenty-year design.
Perfect.
And trees interfere, too.
Trees.
I found that out.
Trees and utilities are the culprits of most damage. Our second project would be a, a concrete repair. This is basically going in and doing, replacing panels, have panels, replacing bad, bad sections of streets. This encompasses twenty streets with a project budget of three million, seven hundred nine thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars and four cents. And our final project is what we're calling a maintenance seal project for asphalt. This would basically be what they can call a scrub seal. They go in and they, as they put a liquid asphalt down, they actually broom it in to make sure it fills the voids, the cracks, and they come back with a fine aggregate, like really, really tiny, fine aggregate that they broom across. And it gives you a little bit more wearing, just to help save the, the asphalt underneath. It just extends that life. It's a total of five streets with a project budget of four hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred thirty dollars and seventy-four cents. With those three projects, you're looking at a total budget for, for the project of eleven million, five hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred sixteen dollars and seventy-three cents. Lot of money. If you keep flipping, you're going to have basically three street lists. In the books, it's under the P for projects, and it's one, two, and three. Your first project is your asphalt overlay, and that basically is the list of the forty-nine streets that we've raked the coals over, trying to squeeze every last one in we could that, you know, from requests. I mean, honestly, most of the stuff when we came to the council members, we were pretty spot-on as far as the list that we had, you know, they matched their list pretty well. There was only a couple of streets that we tried to flip around, you know, to, to make fit the project. But overall, we're pretty much right at the budget that we tried to start at. So. The second list is the concrete list, that's the twenty streets. And you can notice on both of these lists, you know, everything in yellow, that's basically the, the forty-nine, but you have some greens. That's going to be basically your bid alternates. You know, when we bid this thing out, we're going to get prices back, you know, we're estimating the best we can, you know, we're looking at a January, January, beginning of next year, so we're trying to forecast where we think prices will be. Within these bids, within our estimates, we have a construction contingency, because with, with road projects, you have to. You know, you, you're basically, you're paying for the material, you know, there's a lot of things that can go wrong, and there's, sometimes you got a lot that goes right, you can save money, sometimes you can have overrun, so we try to go in with a contingency, so we don't automatically just bust the budget straight out the gate. I mean, it's a, it's a give-and-take situation with the, you know, trying to, trying to estimate. At the end of the day, we want to be on the budget, that way we can come back to you and say, "Hey, you got extra money, we can add some streets." That's our, that's the ultimate goal, is to try to do that. The third list is the the five streets for the asphalt maintenance seal. And these projects would be developed and bid out at separate times. You know, we want to get the asphalt overlay done first, we want that to get out, we want that in construction, before we start issuing the other projects, you know? We don't want to overcommit ourselves too quickly. So just in case there's an issue, we can make adjustments either to the existing project or a future project that's not bid out yet. It's always easier to do that before you actually bid them out. So. This is basically where the list stand. In each of your packets, I gave you your individual districts, your full list, that way if you had a question about a street, you know, but everything that's on your individual district street list is brought forward onto the, the project street list that we're bringing to you for approval.
Cool. Before, before I open up for questions, I just want to thank you. I know the amount of work you put in, and also need to thank my council. I mean, they came prepared, they came with list of streets, they came with recommendations. I think starting hiring you early, like before the bond process was even really up and running, helped, because it gave you some lag work time, but it also gave my council time to work, and I want to thank them for the work they did, because I was very amazed that, as y'all meant, I asked after every meeting, I let, let them go on their own, you know, and do their thing. After every meeting, you and I would talk, and it was, we were very close, we were, you know, everybody really was pretty much on the same page. We know that this is not all the streets, I don't have fifty-seven million, you know, so this is a good start, but, you know, it's something that I, I, I want to continue, and I have some ideas about a few years from now, after we chew what we bid, of how we could do more of this, and, and it's obvious we have to. So I'll open up the floor for questions. Dustin?
Yeah, basically, I have a comment. I'm sure some of the general public and some of the keyboard warriors are going to disagree with the index street data, but after looking at what you, what you proposed and actually seeing and driving the streets of my district every day, you were pretty much spot-on. I don't think we had one street that really with any altercation. So I appreciate you doing that and helping us out with this, so, other than that, that's it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Give a lot of people relief. A lot of people relief when they get finished with this, a lot of people being right in St. Jude. Ooh, washboard. And a few other, St. Mary's are washboard, too. Back, we can't say enough about that. Don't dig no new holes after we fix it, Mr. Mayor.
Well, Mr. Broussard, glad you bring that up. We've already had meetings, and we're already talking about some of the work that might happen with the American Rescue Plan, we're already talking about other utility companies, we're talking about our, you know, sewer that we're funding, that's an in-house project. We were hoping to do a whole flow reroute, which is a huge project, and reflow a third of the town, so we know we're going to have some coordination issues. We, we do know that, you know, we, we have to be vigilant to try, there will be some overlap, but to try to not tear up what we just spent eleven point five million dollars for. But thank you, Mr. Broussard.
So, John, can you talk a little bit about how you guys are going to prioritize the project, the different streets you're going to fix? Because I think people want to know, what's the priority? Even if you don't, you don't have to go through the streets, but just how you guys think through the priority of the streets to work on?
I mean, we're going to develop this into a package, it's going to go out for bid, we're, we're shooting for January, you know, it's going to take us a couple of months to actually get this, you know, the specs and the plans. When we bid it out, you know, from bid to construction starting, you're looking three to four months, just because it takes, takes thirty days to public bid, and then, you know, once we've got to do the paperwork, contracts, you know, that takes time. So essentially, we, we look at the time of year, that's the first thing. You know, if school's in session, you know, we have to work around school schedules, you know, we can't go tear up a road next to a school, because that's, you know, highly inconvenient for everybody. So if we're in the summertime, we really focus on those streets next to schools, because we want to get those done in the three months they're out of school, that way when they come back in the fall, we're completely out their way. We can't always make that work, you know, sometimes weather delays things. Couple of years ago, we had a pro, next to Lewis Street, North, North Lewis, we were fixing Andre Street, and the weather just killed us, and we ran a couple of weeks after. It was, it was a mess, but we, we worked through it. So essentially, that's how we start looking at things. For the most part, we leave the planning to the contractor, just because if we start dictating, you know, them having the, they, they trying to, they're going to look at this project and try to maximize how few moves they really have to make with the equipment. Because some equipment can be driven across the streets, but some of it has to be trailer.
Right.
You know, they, they can't just drive it across town, you know, one, it's slow, and two, it'll damage the streets. So they'll generally kind of start in the area, depending on how many, you know, we have quite a few reconstruction streets, and that'll probably get done a lot sooner, because that takes a longer process. So, you know, the only thing we really stipulate is, you know, looking at the school schedules, trying to avoid conflict with them. This is going to be a long project, seven million dollars is a big project. This is going to probably be six to nine months of constant construction. There's going to be a lot of, a lot of detours, a lot of aggravation, but, you know, everybody complains when it's being constructed, but they're all happy when we're finished. So we, we've, we've done this rodeo a few times. So, you know, it's, it's not all, it's not all happiness while we're, while we're tearing things up, but at the end of the day, what you're going to have is going to be nice. I mean, it's going to be good, it's going to be good roads once you finish.
Well, thank you for that. I just wanted people to understand how you guys think through this priority, so they're not worried about when their street's going to be done. It's going to get done.
It's going to get, if it's on this list...
It might take nine months, but it's going to get done.
And the bids come back favorable, everything on this list should get taken care of.
Excellent.
You know, that's the plan. And as we go through, I mean, you know, we're not going to wait till the end to come to you, you know, we, if we finish up five or six streets, you know, we're going to consolidate, go through the budget, we're going to amend the budget, you know, if there's savings, then we can start, if there's enough savings, we can start talking about, okay, look, you know, we got...
What's next?
What's next? You know? Now, the flip side is, is if we run over, then we're going to have to kind of pause that, just, you know? But in the, the previous projects, we did, five or six previous projects, we, we never, none of them came in over budget. We were able to add at the end, one, maybe two streets at the end, just by managing everything as we went.
Excellent.
Now, the only thing is, if all prices go through the roof, you know, I can't, I can't do anything about that, but, you know, we have, we have enough fluctuation in the budget numbers to try to compensate some of that if it happens.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
John, the only thing you got missing in your package is you and Matt's personal cell number. I need somebody to call with the complaints. But no, I think, as elected officials and serving for the community in the capacity that we are, we always, you know, tend to think that we want something that we can see, feel, and touch, that the people can see, feel, and touch, and we just mentioned this in the back, a lot of things we do are things people can't realize that government's inactive in, and this is just going to be tremendous for our community, and it's going to create a positive vibe in our community that, that's going to just resonate, and thank y'all for the effort y'all did, and I appreciate it.
No problem.
Any other comments?
I'm just happy to see Lombard written there.
Yes, sir. Well, if there's no other comments, then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Good. Good work. Madam Clerk, five eight.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two dash zero one, budget adoption ordinance, and ordinance adopting the budget for the city of New Iberia for the fiscal year ending October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and to set for public hearing on October fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Do I have a motion?
Move.
Motion by Councilman Swir. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. Any discussion on this item?
So all the corrections that we discussed?
Kevin, come on up.
Formulas, that kind of thing, all that's been done?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
No, I was just asking, I mean, we had a really good budget meeting the other day, and so you explained a lot of these numbers. We ran into a few things that actually needed to be adjusted, all the adjustments have been made, and we're good to go.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I was just checking.
No problem, no problem. Any other questions?
I got a question. You finished, did he?
Yes.
Okay. So, so tonight, Kevin, tonight, we're going to vote on a forty-seven million dollar budget package, roughly, what is it? First question, I'm assuming that the American Rescue money is not included in this budget, correct?
The ARPA?
Yeah.
The ARPA is not in the operating numbers, but it is in the capital outlay in the back.
But it's not an over forty-seven million dollar budget? Right. So, okay, so it is an ARP in the back, so by, yeah, by voting on this in the forty-seven million, now that it's just an ARP in the back, correct?
It's the, the plans for the use of the money of the ARPA is in the back in the capital outlay.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, we've discussed in budget meetings, a few changes, I thought that was minor, but I think we got corrected, but, you know, we're embarking on a true budget that's balanced and fiscally responsible, and I'm excited, but I think that the city's on good side of legs right now, and if we continue to space, you know, good things are to come. So, but I don't, I don't have any particular questions, but thanks for your efforts.
John, you're welcome.
Any other comments?
Can I have a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want the employees, the city employees, to know that I didn't not forget about them and their retirement benefits. I'm going to continue to work with my coun, my fellow council members and the mayor in order to, to get that done in, as soon as we can.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Kevin, I was from the old days in here. Old days in here, we went a whole year without somebody addressing like you're doing every month, we appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Going the old days, I mean, it left us in a bind once a year, finding out we're in a deficit, you know? We thank you for everything you're doing month to month, even though we give you a little rough times sometimes.
I know you're paying attention when you do that.
We thank you, Kevin, it helps us a lot.
You're welcome.
Know the numbers.
Well, it goes from the top down, it's all, you know, starting with Freddie, it's all budget-conscious.
It was quite a mix-up when you go year to year.
Yes, sir.
And you find out, whoop.
No whoops.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Good job, Kevin.
Oh, thank you, you're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just going to say, and the budget's done, it's great, and we're going to do the status meetings from time to time to let people know how we're doing on our capital outlay projects and big projects.
That we are, with, off of this list, I mean, we all know that some of the ARPA projects will probably morph and change. We are in the process now of talking to a consultant, Ellie May has loaned us their attorney, we have talked to our auditors, who will audit it, so I know some things are going to, you know, change, but I bring everything back. I mean, the fun part of this is, you see every contract, you see every professional service, you see every bid, you approve every step along the way, so it's not like this is, it's in stone, but it's flexible of us doing our jobs. So the transparency makes it fun, but you are right. What we need to do, we have so many projects in this coming budget in this year, we are going to do, you know, quarterly for sure, where we really present our projects, present what we're doing, and really show people what's coming. You know, the roads, it was obvious, they're going to see the roads, but there are many projects that we do have coming that are in the works, that I think it will be good that, to, you know, just keep everybody updated and fresh and understand, you know, that we on the move. I mean, we are, you know, thanks to y'all and a whole lot of people's efforts, you know, we're making a lot of things happen. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I just want to dito with Ricky. I think the budget is in great shape, because if it wasn't, it wouldn't have took us one night to actually agree on this as a council together. So that's, that's a way of knowing that we're all on the same page in accomplishing the same goal for New Iberia, so, again, thank y'all.
Anything further? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you, and I have one other little small item I want to bring up. There is some talk, I'm waiting, on the civil service board, we would have time to do this, so they were talking about some of our workers wanted a three percent increase instead of a two percent increase, but they started this process very late, they didn't let me know, I didn't get, I'm going to get in my soapbox for one second, didn't get to attend the meeting, didn't know it was coming, and we had already had our budget meeting, and, you know, we work on these budgets starting in August. To be able to borrow twelve point five million to do our roads, to be able to think about doing the pepper plex, to be able to do all these things we're doing, this is a constant, this is work. I mean, we are putting the time in to do things differently, and we are spending, you know, huge amounts of money. So this hit us at the last minute, I'm not saying no to the one percent, you know, we're going to make that decision as a group, and maybe we can afford it, maybe we can't. I'm saying the process sucked. I mean, we should have been involved in that, and we should have known, so I wrote a letter asking them in the future to let us know by August. The other thing is, you can't look at it for just the municipal workers. What about your fire department, what about your police department, what about the court system, what about the dispatchers, what about all the other people, what about the supervisors, ba, basically, either department heads? So you would give a raise to the worker, but not the person that supervises them, so if we consider this, it's going to have to be globally. So Kevin has run the numbers on it, I'm going to follow the process, although I don't like the process, and I'm going to change it, at least speed it up. For this year, that'll come next meeting, and we're lucky that we always try to do our budget since I've been here, at least two weeks early. I always do it early, just in case there's a hiccup, well, here's our hiccup. So we'll approve this budget at the next meeting. At the next meeting, we'll have their documentation, if they go through with it, where they're requesting this additional one percent, and that'll give us the two meetings, so that by November one. What you don't want to do is make your, your finance people go to work, make all these adjustments to payroll for two percent, then have to go back a week later and do it for three? You know, that, that's not cool. So what we're going to do, we'll have two meetings, so at the following meeting, we'll have a vote for the budget, and then one just for the one percent, if that's something we want to do. We'll introduce that, and then at the following meeting, you know, we'll adopt it, but that way, our people are working one time, and in the future, I hope we get it earlier. But I wanted to bring it up, because it's not in here, in here is what's mandated by law, which is a two percent increase. But that way, we're all on the same page for the next meeting, when that comes. So, thank you. Now we move on, Madam Clerk, item six.
Jimmy Landry to discuss dilapidated and dangerous condition of properties at the following location.
Okay.
All right, Jimmy, and these are all on deck, right?
All right, in October, the two meetings in October, we're going to have public hearings on sixteen houses, eight at each meeting.
Good.
Okay. Once those get demolished and out of the way, these are the next ones coming up.
And we have twenty, we brought ten tonight, so these on deck. What we want people to do is recognize your house and do something about it before we get to it. That way, it doesn't go on your taxes, we're not spending taxpayer money to do it, and you don't owe it at the end, so... No, these are the next batch.
And so we have ten more coming?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Probably March or April.
Yeah, we wanted to bring, bring these ten, which got people maybe interested, but maybe...
Public hearing, and then Jeff will have to do what he does.
These ten are handling your business before we get to you, and then we'll be bringing some to demo, that we have the money, we're ready to demo, and then somewhere along the path, we'll bring another ten that's for people to maybe handle on their own.
First meeting in November, is what I'm planning.
Okay.
Okay.
Let it rip, Jimmy.
Okay, the first one is two ninety-five Camellia.
That's a mess.
Any?
Yeah, that's mine.
Yes.
Yeah.
No matter how many times we turn it in, they don't do anything, so.
Wasn't hard to put that one on the list.
Well, that one's in the process with, for the junk, with the city prosecutor.
Right.
Okay, so, I wanna say we have a court date in October.
I mean, do we really expect them to clean it up, though? And then we're gonna demolish it?
Well, if we go to court, then he'll have to do what the court mandates.
Okay.
If not, maybe the public works will go clean it.
Nothing else, he needs a big fine.
It's two problems.
Yes.
It's junk and it's demolition.
Yeah.
But by having, you know, a new city prosecutor, having the judge on board, we are being more aggressive, we have even kinda tweaked some ordinances, and we'll continue to do that, so that we, there is some ramifications. It can't be blow us off, and the point of getting you to court is that you will have to take action.
It's a long process, though, because I remember there was confusion, they thought it was my district.
This has been going on since February.
There is nothing quick about.
I was called to that house, I thought it was January, but, okay, February.
February, when I got it.
That's the one you called and told me, hey, I think this is yours.
She gave you a present.
You're welcome.
Process, but, but at least we have a process.
Yeah, that's true. But they, it would be nice if they actually cleaned that mess up before we get to go out there and demolish it. It's filling over to Jane Street now. I know. That's how bad it is.
The same person we have.
Okay, the next one is four oh eight Dale. Oh, you passed one of those.
Three twenty-one is first.
Three twenty-one.
Has the adjacent property owners reached out to you about purchasing this property at all?
No, not, they might have.
The two next door, it's like, I guess there were some remodels.
There was one house to the left, that was just remodeled, it, it's gorgeous.
So, he's never contacted you about this?
He might have called me to ask me who the owner.
Everyone in this room knows who that house is for.
Yeah, he, he called me about it, I wanna say, and I told him who the owner was, and he got to get with him.
All right.
So, I don't think anything's happened.
The owner might respond.
Well, if you're interested, got one for sale, maybe.
Four oh eight West Dale.
Thank you. Such an eyesore. Trust me, insane every time I pass by.
Every time I pass by, today I passed, and there's a, since everything is open, there's a chair where somebody's moved a chair, and then they sit in there when they feel like it.
Which, that's not gonna happen anymore.
They have a lot of houses that are open in town.
Yes.
You know, and the people, they don't board them.
We, we do have an ordinance that says that they have to board it, right?
Yeah.
I know I've sent you a few of those, and a couple of them have gotten boarded, but.
Yeah. Eight oh one Francis.
Yeah, another one of mine.
You got some beauties.
I know.
What kind of district you running?
Actually, that's an adjudicated property, too. This is the one where they, we went and cleaned it up, the yard, yeah.
Yeah.
I think God is finally getting torn down.
Yeah.
It's been empty for you, the lady is deceased. I know, I'm cleaning up this district. Y'all would just hand me a little stuff, I can give y'all some more. Is that the owner in the picture?
And this house is for sale?
Is that the owner in the picture?
That's Julia, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, who's in the picture?
People are getting a call every day on that.
And it's burnt, it's burnt too, right?
Yeah.
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 It's burnt and it's for sale.
Re-burned every once in a while.
He does, yeah, I got complaints too about it, he goes and starts to buy it.
Shouldn't have that in there.
Before you won't have nothing to pick up.
Six thirty Mississippi Street. Somebody looking for a lot for a trailer.
Finally.
Yeah, now, you know, with that trailer, with our existing trailer ordinance, you have six months. If someone bought that, they could put another trailer, which is odd, because we don't really have more trailers.
Yeah.
Might be an opportunity for somebody.
That's not part of mixing trailer park.
No.
Okay.
No.
I don't think it is.
No, it's not.
This is on the corner of Anne and School, and it's been burnt for years, it needs to come down. The people are gonna be so happy, I get more complaints about that than anything.
People don't like burnt houses.
That's right.
Eleven oh three Spencer Loop, that's another one, a trailer, if somebody would purchase it, they could put a trailer on that lot. Twelve fourteen St. Jude.
It's not in my district.
Is that on the south side?
That's on the left side of the thing. Well, if you go on Armadale, it's on the right side.
Yes, that's the south.
By the church. I think it's a block before the church.
Another one of mine.
Six ten West Washington.
Yeah.
And we got one more. Oh, that's the last one.
That's the last one.
That was the last one.
Good, Jimmy, thank you, and like I said, we just need to keep as politely as we can. We need to keep the pressure on, okay? We need to continue to budget money, we need to continue the pace we're on, because as Brooke pointed out, it's a very slow process, but if we continue to ramp up and continue to fund, fund this, and just keep bringing these batches of eight and ten at a time, it is a lot of work on Jeff's, a lot of work on Jimmy and Liz, I mean, I, I see that, but the only way we're gonna make a dent, you know, at the end of the year of us really throwing basically probably a hundred grand at all of this, and a whole lot of, you know, employee hours, we're gonna see how many we do, and I think at the end, I'm glad, and we're moving in the right direction, but you're gonna see that, you know, how many, how many houses you think by the time we end this year will have torn down, actually torn down?
This year?
Yeah, what do you think?
Well, it depends on the public hearing goes.
I know, but if it all goes good, optimum, what do you think?
Sixteen.
That's what I was thinking, I was gonna say twenty. So, at a good pace, throwing money at it, it's twenty houses a year, you know? I'm sorry, with the problems we have, that's not a lot of houses.
I know.
Uh, you know, I don't know how I can speed it up any more than that, but I guess what I'm telling y'all is.
You can speed it up if the people in the community would take their responsibility.
That's why we're trying to do this, you know, as often as we can, but if we have any success with this one, this batch of, hey, this is on deck, handle your business, we could speed that up, because that's pretty, you know?
In the last sixteen that would come into public hearing, I've had, think, one or two.
Yeah.
Uh, the one on Field Street, they got that permit, I had a lady come in, wanted to remodel one, but, you know, I don't know. I'm just holding off on issuing remodeling permits until we get to the public hearing.
That's fine, yeah, well, it keeps the pressure on.
Yeah.
Because they can tell you, we've seen that in the past, that they get a permit, they'll do anything, you know?
Then we're stuck.
Then we're stuck.
Well, the one on Field Street in Corrine, the burnt house.
They got a demolition.
They are actually taking it down right now.
Yeah.
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 I mean, when I passed the other day, we're in the process of taking it down, so it might be completely done. I didn't pass there today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I just think we need to continue this and continue on the path, and I thank y'all, because, you know, it's not easy, I mean, you know, we're basically, this is the most drastic thing government can do, is tear somebody's house down, but on the flip side, look what it's doing to the neighborhoods and to the neighbors, I mean, we don't have a choice.
And that's the thing. How much does it cost per house for us, sorry, to tear it down?
It depends, if it has asbestos or not.
Yeah, low of three, four thousand, high of six or seven?
Oh, okay.
No, sometimes they go ten.
Well, sometimes ten with a lot of asbestos, you're right.
Anyway, from three to ten.
Okay.
Anyway, three to ten.
Yeah.
Okay.
I normally, when I budget, I normally say six thousand dollars a house, just if on average.
The one in your district came and got a demo permit, too.
Which one?
San Andres.
Oh.
One twenty-four.
So, they're gonna take it down?
Yeah.
Good. The neighbors will be happy to hear that.
Yeah.
Good.
The Armadillo's have to move elsewhere.
Those two, man. They will.
And I think it's in.
Jimmy, they tearing down, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, well, yeah, we getting this.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, go ahead, Marlon.
They tearing down the one on Lomb, uh, Abar and Anderson Street, too, yeah, so.
But that wasn't on the list.
I know, but it's coming, I called you one time, and it's already coming down, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, what we're hoping is that people start to see these things coming down, they start to take them down themselves, because it's so much more expensive for us to take it down, and it's gonna be added to your taxes, so then, yeah, you know, jeopardy of losing the property.
Yep.
So, please take them down.
It's so much faster, it's not a six-month process. If you decide to do it, you can get a permit and do it in two weeks, you know?
Yeah, let's all work together to clean up these dilapidated properties in New Iberia and make this city beautiful again.
Amen to that.
And cut the grass once it's towed down.
Please do.
We have a lot of grass to cut now.
And don't blow it in the street. Uh, we're gonna start creating some community gardens. I need to let, these empty lots.
Well, we need some new houses, is what we need, but I'll take community garden. Anybody else?
We're lacking on money.
Bruceard?
We're lacking on money, we weren't talking about removing these houses for years, for a while. Yeah, I'm not saying the years, but it was quiet, it's sure, sure nice. When we take one down, the whole block, the whole block gets excited. I mean, the whole area gets excited, that house, I, two, two out, two streets over. Man, that was good you took that house down. You know, hey, I'm so glad, Mr. Mayor, that we talking about this and we have money.
Well, it is a lot more fun to be up here when you have money than when you're broke. I've seen both, and it ain't no fun, so, anyway. Good, thank y'all, thank you, Jimmy. Councilman's remarks, I'll start with Brooke tonight.
Okay, do you wanna update on Summerfield subdivision drainage? Of course you do.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
So, I spoke with DOTD today, and they're gonna do a drainage study over there by the end of the week, and then they'll get back with me, so hopefully it's an easy fix. I have a feeling it won't be, but, you know, we gotta work with the parish and the state to get it done, so that's where we're at as of right now, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm gonna take my time, the honor. This month, National, Ms. Cynthia Elmas came last month, she talked about Suicide Month, and I think mental health, health awareness, and she does a great job with that. I got some call, well, a call from an agency that, you know, reminded me that was, well, they didn't remind me, they asked me to acknowledge National Recovery Month, and I realized that the president also did a proclamation as making September National Recovery Month for people that struggle with addiction. And I just wanna give a shout out to all of those agencies that are out there, Iberia Parish Drug Court, Keys, some of the recovery houses, you know, for the work they're doing in our community to make our community healthy, mentally healthy, 'cause there's still a lot of people out there that struggle with addiction. I'm very familiar with that community, and I wanted to pay homage and acknowledge them for National Recovery Month in September.
Thank you.
We have the state coming to New Iberia, hard to get them over here. Every three years or so, they wanna come down and talk, the twenty-third, Thursday, six o'clock, Slime and Theater. Remember this council, we don't wanna close any crossings. Caroline and Providence they talking about, so please, the people, please come to this meeting and vocal your words to the state, don't talk to, we, we don't wanna close any, but the state wants to close some, so please, I talked about this before, very important meeting, y'all come down Thursday night, six o'clock, Slime and Theater, and talk to the state about not closing some of our crossings.
Thank you, Mr. Bruceard.
So, Mayor, council, thank you, as we go around our districts in town, and we discuss items with our parishioners and constituents and everybody, and we hear a lot of negative derogatory comments about our city and what we can, what we can't do, and we hear a lot of problems, but not a whole lot of solutions. But I'm here to tell you tonight, this council, this administration, forty-seven million dollar budget, new roads, we about to embark on approving a new state-of-art ballpark, we demolition blighted property. To me, that's progressiveness, that's progressive, the community forward. If that's not improving your community and providing a safe, happy place for people to work and play and grow their families, what is? I think we're making big steps, and I commend you all on your efforts.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna add on to what Councilman Bruceard said about the meeting on Thursday evening at six o'clock at the Slime and. My constituents in my district, in the Caroline Street area, I sent, I delivered, hand-delivered flyers announcing this, this open house, public meeting, to them on Byard Street, on Caroline, and on Evangeline. And I want the people in that area to know, if Caroline Street Crossing closes, it's gonna definitely increase traffic on either Byard, or Byard and Evangeline Street. So, please, please, if you want to see this continue to, to stay open, the Caroline Street, Street Crossing is to stay like it is, and maybe they put cross arms on it, to please come out or send your public comment. They really want stuff in writing, so please, please, send your public comments in writing to, what's your email address?
It's E. Romero, R.O.M.E.R.O. at cityofnewiberia.com.
So, we can have them and compile them and give them to Mr. Struzberry at the meeting, and please come out to, to show your support to keep those two crossings open.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So, the Iberians United Organization is sponsoring a disaster relief donation drive this Saturday in the Weston Park, I think it starts at like nine in the morning till about three o'clock. You can drive through and give them donations, these donations will be brought to the city of La Plaiz to help with, you know, people who were affected by Hurricane Ida. They're looking for things like toiletries, paper foods, non-perishable foods, cleaning supplies, formulas, diapers for babies and elderly, clothing, paper goods, bedding, and bath towels. So, if you have some of that stuff available, or if you wanna just go buy some and donate it, I mean, please just drive through Weston Park, they will take it out of your trunk or the back of your car and load it up, and they're gonna take it to La Plaiz. These people are in dire straits, they really need the help, and so any donation you can give will be appreciated. Also, we, Marlon and I talked the last time about the fact that we were gonna have a joint cleanup on the Hopkins Street area, part District Two and part District Five. We had to postpone it until November thirteenth, because we have a lot of people in our community that's actually helping with the disaster relief effort in the eastern part of the state. They've been going out to, you know, Thibodeau, Homa, you know, La Plaiz, all of that area, New Orleans, helping, so we felt like we needed to give them a little time to help with that recovery, and then we're gonna have our cleanup on November thirteenth. So, Mayor, we'd also like to postpone the unveiling of the Martin Luther King Memorial Highway signs until after that, 'cause we want the, the city to be, the area to be clean before we unveil that, so if you don't mind, we'll wait until then.
We are ready to put them up when you're ready, I mean, the poster in place, that way we had called Dottie, got all those clearances, if anybody's wondering what those empty signposts are on, along Hopkins Street, that's what it is, so whenever you wanna coordinate it, y'all let me know, and, and we'll get it done.
Okay, we, we'd like to try and get some invitations out to some people, so that gives us a little more time as well. And I may ask the public, please, don't hit the, the poles, we already had a set of them that were knocked down, so we had to go and replace them. So, let's be careful, they're there for a reason, but thank you, guys.
Thank you. Dustin?
Yeah, I have a couple. So, like Ms. Reed was saying, people are still hurting out there. For example, the town of Grand Isle, electrical grid is completely gone, so they might not see power till the end of the year, maybe next year. Went down there Saturday. Pictures and videos do not do it justice, but those people are strong, and they're gonna get through it, I know it. Also, to the Pro Tem, you're right, forty-seven million dollar balanced budget, who can complain about that? But you have some out there that, that just don't wanna take those blinders off, but, but for the ones that are and actually seeing what we have going on and being optimistic, I wanna thank them. And hopefully, we can retain the people that we have here and keep them here, and we have a lot of good stuff coming, and just, it's, it's going great, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, sure.
One more announcement, it's about RSVP program that's coming to Iberia Parish, associated with Smile. They've had this program, it's a volunteer senior program, and they're looking for senior volunteers to, to help out in this area, so they're sponsoring a luncheon, and it was postponed. It's going to be on September the twenty-ninth at the Weston Park, beginning at eleven o'clock in the morning. So, if you're interested, you're senior and you wanna volunteer, come on out, make sure that you call the Smile office here on Walton Street and let them know you're gonna attend, so they'll have an accurate count. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I just have a couple, the next meeting is October the fifth. Again, I will take my little plug of the DOTD open house that we need to attend and comment about the possible closing of Providence and Caroline Crossings. Having gone through this one time before when I was the Pro Tem, at the end of the day, we just said, we're not closing it, it's your crossing, you close it, but we don't want to close it. So, we never took action, we did a resolution that said we not closing it, 'cause it belongs to you. But it's important for the public to come out if we are going to have our last attempt to stop this. You need to come out, you need to comment, and I have seen it work before, so, you know, I would ask people to come out. Other than that, we have properties for sale on civicsource.com, and don't go anywhere, 'cause we have another meeting. But with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Thank y'all very much.